Good evening, Board members and residents. I'd like to call to order our regular meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023, and I'd ask that everyone present please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Badkins.
Here.
Mr. Brado is asked to be excused. Mr. Olgiati?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tomminallo?
Here.
Mr. Witt, here. Mr. Verkes?
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, including approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August 28th, 2023, and approval of the bills in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next is the approval of the regular agenda. I am not aware of any revisions, so if there are none, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is announcements. I do have a few announcements. Our Senior Center will be hosting their annual Senior Expo on Tuesday, September 19th, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. For more information about this event, you can contact the Senior Center, 586-466-1497. Our Harrison Township Parks and Rec Committee is hosting their annual Back to School Bash, or I believe the first one, right?
First annual.
First annual Back to School Bash on this coming Saturday, September 16th, at our waterfront park. We'd ask you to visit the township website under the Parks and Rec tab to preregister for this event. Our Parks and Rec is also excited to announce their annual Holo Palooza will be taking place October 14th, from noon until 2:00 p.m. We are looking for people to host a trunk, as well as accepting free registrations for trunk or treaters. You can find all of the information on the township website and our social media platforms. This week, this Thursday, September 14th, our Treasurer's Office will be hosting late hours. The Treasurer's Office will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to accommodate anyone needing to pay their summer taxes, because this Thursday is the final due date without any penalties. And for information on these or other township events, you can call the Supervisor's Office, 586-466-1445. Visit our website at harrison township mi.gov, or follow us on Twitter and Facebook at Harrison T W P M I. Any other announcements? All right, hearing none, we'll move forward on our agenda to item D1 regarding an SAD. Mr. Witt?
Yes, as we discussed at our previous board meeting, the township has received sufficient signatures from the residents of Santos, Cortez, and Carno Streets to create a special assessment district to repave those streets. We are required to adopt a resolution of intent in order for us to be able to issue bonds to fund this capital improvement project. The attached resolution outlines that we will be issuing bonds and allows us to reimburse from the, allows us to be reimbursed from the proceeds of the sale for any costs associated with the project, as well as shows that we'll be using Clark Hill again as our bond counsel, as well as M F C I as our financial consultant, as we've done in the past. So we're just looking for a motion to adopt the intent resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Tomminallo with support by Mr. Badkins to adopt the intent resolution. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Tomminallo?
Yes.
Mr. Badkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brado is excused. Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Witt, yes. Mr. Verkes?
Yes. Next on our agenda, item E1 from our Water and Sewer Department regarding concrete repairs. The Water and Sewer Department recently solicited quotes from multiple cement contractors to replace damaged sidewalks and cement areas from recent water main break repairs. Two companies replied with a bid, Premier Concrete and D and E Landscaping. Premier Concrete has, we have used them in the past, they've consistently been the low bidder. They were the low bidder on this, a total cost of seventeen thousand dollars, so it would be recommended to accept a low bid from Premier Concrete to replace damaged sidewalks, driveways, and curbs for the water main breaks at a cost of seventeen thousand dollars.
Make a motion to accept the low bid from Premier Contract for the damaged sidewalks, driveways, and curbs due to water main breaks at a cost of seventeen thousand dollars.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion?
I just got a question on their, I guess their clarifications, they're not guaranteeing cracks, flakings, or chips. So what are they guaranteeing?
I, you know, be asked with you, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I mean, that's, because if, you know, depending on the concrete mix, obviously, right, it, that's, that's the three things it does, if it's poured incorrectly. So basically, I'm not quite sure why, well, this is just another example of a, of a contract, a potential contractor, that tells us what they are and aren't going to do. So I've got an issue with the way it's worded.
I, I think the only thing that's guaranteed is that materials are what the materials are. There's no guarantee involved in the concrete at all, other than saying, we're going to give you the materials you're buying. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's poured incorrectly, those three things can happen. If you look at what happened over at the pump station, that whole pad had to be replaced, that whole, because it flaked. So I, I do take exception again to how this is worded. So that's my two cents.
Well, I can say that Premier has, has probably been our concrete contractor for the majority of the time that I've been supervisor. If they, if they haven't been the low bidder, I mean, I'm saying, we're talking about work going back at least 10 years that we've worked with them, and they have done good work. So I, I recognize your concern there. You know, they, they have, it's the same, I know it's still the same company, it's still the same owner, the same guys, and they have done, not only have they been competitive, but they have done good work. I think they also did the crossing. When we had to, when we had to cross North Point Parkway for the pumping, we saw it out of section of the road there. They did that work. It was satisfactory to, you know, that was county, you know, concrete job, but it was our cost to replace it. So I, I am comfortable knowing that we've worked with them before, and, and I say, over approximately a 10-year period, have not had an issue with them. Any other discussion?
I just noticing that, that on D and E, the, the former four six bags of thirty-five-hundred PSI were Premier's at four thousand. I don't know if that helps you with anything, Mr. Badkins?
Yeah, that's just the strength of the concrete.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it's, it's a reflection on the type of concrete they're going to use. So that's the only point now that's making that up.
Sidewalk's not good if it's, if it's flaking and cracking.
Right.
Everything else, I mean, it's not. So I, I guess, I guess eventually, we're going to have to, I would think we'd want to put something in place where these contractors sign our terms and conditions and our guarantees and not theirs. I brought it up before, and if we consistently use these folks, you can put an agreement in place, and then when you write a contract to them, they've already signed it. Doesn't matter what they put down on this, right? So again, it's just, they are a good contractor, but, you know, sometimes the wording, even with, even with the penalty clauses, I know we pay right away, you know, with the 18% annual interest rate, so.
Well, I have no problem talking to the folks that oversee this work and take a look at maybe a better way of wording these in the future. So I made a note for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on the agenda, item F1 from the Clerk's office.
Yes. So the Clerk's office was recently served a summons from Circuit Court, naming Harrison Township, myself, and the Deputy Clerk as defendants in a Freedom of Information Act appeal. The Board will be familiar with this, as it was an appeal that the Board heard at our June 12th meeting. We're requesting that the Board authorize Kirk Huth, Lang, and Batali to represent the township in this litigation. A similar appeal has been filed with multiple communities across Macomb County, and the municipal attorneys are working together to represent their respective communities. I feel that gives us the best opportunity for success, you know, with everyone pulling in the same direction, because these lawsuits are all literally cut and paste from one to the other. So we have great confidence in Mr. Huth and his firm, so we request the Board authorize them to represent us in this case.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mrs. Rose. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Board. We have a conference call tomorrow with the 17 attorneys representing the different communities to try and streamline our efforts, and we've been sharing some documents and ideas already, so I appreciate the assignment.
All right. Next on the agenda, item F2. Mr. Witt?
Yes. We've received the information from the Department of Roads about their 2024 subdivision reconstruction program. In order to apply, we must prepare application packets by September 29th. We have previously been successful with this program, and we'd like to work towards applying for three more projects. We have been working with residents on obtaining the required signatures for these three projects, and we're looking to have Wade Trim submit those applications that meet the signature threshold. So part of the Department of Roads' new requirements is the signatures upfront prior to granting these projects. We met with three different roads about that. They, one of them has signatures in circulation, and...
One's already done.
One's already done. And then the third one, at this point, they have not picked up petitions, so we're not sure if that one's going to go.
And from conversations I've had with two individuals, it doesn't seem like it will.
Yeah, and it's a unique project, because it involves commercial and residential together, and everyone wants to stick it to the other person, because they're not the ones that drive on the road. It's the other guy that drives on the road, so no one's going to be happy unless 100% is borne by the other person. So, but we're asking Wade Trim put together a packet at a cost of fifteen dollars, or put down, put together a bid for the work, fifteen hundred dollars per project, so up to a total of 4,500 to complete those applications. Ultimately, the cost would be covered by the Special Assessment District if they're created. We're just looking for Board authorization to allow Wade Trim to create the grant application for the subdivision reconstruction program, and it costs not to see 4,500 bucks. We will probably kick them off on the two right away, and if something changes on that third, we would add it. So I don't expect to spend the full 45, it'd probably likely be 3,000.
I would agree.
But again, it's giving these residents a shot at a better project long term.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Tomminallo, support by Mrs. Rose, and this is, we're looking at upwards of $500,000 per, per project. So it could potentially be a million dollars of grant.
Yeah.
Monies, so, you know, it's definitely worthwhile. All right, any other discussion?
So just to clarify for the residents and remind me as well, if I'm just now hearing about this, my street, it's too late to get the signatures going, but if in anticipation of next year, what do I do? Just contact the Clerk's office and say, hey, at some point, if any money comes available, our street wants to be considered?
Really, what we're looking for is a commitment prior to money being available. That, they need to make a commitment in advance. So we would host a meeting, they can get the information about the project, and then decide whether or not they're comfortable spending any amount of money on the project, because it doesn't eliminate the cost of the work. It just increases the scope, and you get a better product. So you're still paying, I'm going to say, ballpark, eleven thousand dollars for your road, and you have to be comfortable in doing that prior to us even applying for the grant, because the amount doesn't really change much with the grant, it just gets you a better drainage work.
But to even be considered for this, because the turnaround time now is like so short.
Yeah, right. So what, so, so I think another way to, to address it is throughout the year, most typically, beginning in the spring. During the spring thaw, people come in, and it's like Groundhog Day, the township, you guys aren't taking care of my road. And so you say, well, actually, Mr. Smith, we, we aren't responsible for your road. So they go through that whole process. Well, what can we do about it? And so, right, so it's that grassroots. So this is available to anybody, but we're allowed to apply for up to three per year. But I think to Adam's point, there has to be that, you know, like, we don't, we, we don't like to not apply. So in the past, I want to say, two or three, during COVID, maybe, two or three years ago, we reached out to a couple of streets, because, because of the tone of everything, people weren't coming into the office because of COVID and whatnot. So we identified, I think, Shoreline and Trombley as two roads that we thought were good targets. Those were our guesses. We, and that was before we needed signatures, but we, we were not successful. So I, it, it really goes down to, so, for example, the, of the three that we looked at, the cheapest one, per homeowner, is the one that isn't moving forward. So it isn't always cost that's that deciding factor. I've found that, in some cases, maybe in a neighborhood that's older, and when I say older, not mean, not the age of the neighborhood, but the average age of the resident, right? Maybe there, you know, folks say, well, I, you know, I'm really not interested in taking that on, or maybe a younger family that's moved in, that's maybe in their earning phase. When you see a street flip over and there's more young people, it seems like those projects are usually more successful in gaining the signatures. But it's, the answer is, it's got to be driven by the residents. There has to be that willingness to request this. We get a cost estimate, we hold a meeting, go get your signatures, and then we'll go through this process.
Okay, so to your point, the reason Shoreline is still so pockmarked or whatever is because the residents don't want to pay their portion.
Well, and, and what I would say is, is, I would say there are a number of residents who do, and there are a number of residents who aren't willing, and if the unwilling participants are greater than the willing ones, then that's what happens. Shoreline is, we tried, an approach where Shoreline is a little bit different as a local road goes, because it's, it's, you know, it could serve me, though I live a street over, because I could use that to pass through, you know, the neighborhood, it connects to some neighborhoods.
Right.
That's also one of the things that throws off some of these projects, is when the road is potentially a through road. So one of them that we're looking at was Conger Bay. We've got marinas at the end, and there's neighbors that say, well, you know, the condition of the road slows down the drunks that are flying back and forth to the marina. Well, I can't say that's true or not, but those emotional things are kind of what sometimes drive whether people want to do it. So, but it is, and, and the county will do, the county, the most the county can contribute to a local road project is 50%, but even outside of this, they'll do 40%. And, and, but this grant program requires drainage improvements, so they're saying, we'll get, we'll pay for half the cost, but you've got to also do drainage improvements and repave the road. So that's what, you know, if the drainage improvements aren't required, obviously, the cost is less, but then the county won't match. So that's where Adam was saying, you can say, okay, it's eight thousand dollars a house, and if we get a grant, the project's going to double, but they'll pay for half of it, so it's still going to cost you eight grand, but your road's going to last substantially longer because you improved the drainage.
Does it make a difference if it's like a through road, like, like Trombley would be, where you can go from Jefferson to Harper?
But, but not really, but like North Point Parkway is a different road, because it's a higher grade, it's not a local residential, it's a collector residential, so it's a higher grade of road.
So an example might be Jefferson over by Lobastall. That was, that, that got a new skin on it, I think, last year. And there was no participation, but the county sees that different, Jefferson, they're going to treat differently, Metro Parkway, obviously, North Point, North Point Parkway, there was no participation, but that was just concrete restoration. So, so yeah, Trombley is a tricky one, Conger Bay is a tricky one, because they might carry a greater traffic, but they, you know, Shoreline, they're still going to call it a local road. And so that designation determines what kind of funding is available. All right, any other discussions or questions? All right, hearing none and seeing no public comment, we've got a motion by Mr. Tomminallo with support by Mrs. Rose. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on the agenda, item G1 regarding negotiations. Board members, our I A F F, G E L C E, and AFSMI contracts are scheduled to expire at the end of this year. As in the past, we typically appoint a negotiation team for the purpose of negotiating successor agreements. So we're looking for a motion to appoint three members to the negotiation team. It certainly isn't required, but historically it has been the three full-time officials for probably the last two or three contract cycles at least.
Almost exclusively, except for one case.
I did it one time as a trustee, and I think Jack did it one time.
Yeah, just recently, it was, we had one incident, so.
Yeah. So, so historically, in, in recent years, it has been the Clerk, the Treasurer, and the Supervisor, but it's obviously up to the will of the Board, who they might appoint.
I'll make a motion to appoint the three full-timers.
All right.
To the negotiation team.
All right, is there support?
I'll support that motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next, item G2 on the agenda, regarding our MERS agreement. Board members, the recent contract approved for the Finance Director added a contribution, added a contribution to a MERS retiree healthcare savings account. The terms of this contribution are a little different than the other plans, so a new agreement with MERS has to be approved. They helped us draft that agreement, and, and the agreement is enclosed or included in the board packet. I'm asking for authorization to create the new agreement with MERS as presented. So in essence, what MERS is saying is, so MERS is the municipal employees retirement system, so, and they offer a tax-advantaged healthcare savings plan. There are, to my knowledge, there are only two that have an IRS ruling. MERS happens to be one of them. So it is, it is a, it comes with certain tax advantages for the employee. And so we have a MERS retiree healthcare savings plan that we offer to our, the other bargaining units, but the, the terms that we offered for the Finance Director is slightly different, which is okay, but it requires an additional agreement that would be authorized.
Make a motion to authorize Supervisor to execute the new agreement with MERS as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Badkins. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next on our agenda is item H, public comments. So we'll open up the floor now for public comments. They can be about any subject that you wish. We ask that you try to limit those to five minutes in length.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Board. We've had a couple of weeks off with, from meetings at the Commission Board, but that doesn't mean we're not busy meeting with citizens and doing other things, of course. You all know about that. Our meetings are this week and next week, so we'll be extra busy, which is fine, of course. I just wanted to let the citizens know that. I just wanted to come up today, and I hope I'm not going to interfere with something you're going to say, Ken. But of course, today is a remembrance of nine one, nine eleven, and I just wanted to speak on that briefly, how, of course, how tragic that was, that we still remember that. The media keeps that going, and other people, and other groups. Heard Sheriff Bouchard speaking, who's, I was driving today as a, a group that offered that honor. Nice to hear that. Oh, there are many groups that, remember, our military, our veterans. We do it here, and you organize that here in the township, of course. They mentioned that children born now don't have, there were, there were children who were born, of course, that weren't alive at that time. They really don't have any memory, they have no memory, of course. So it's an interesting situation. Life keeps going on, but they, they have these remembrances of, of what, what can happen and what did happen. I'm, I'm proud that our country is still doing that. We have many things to remember, and promoting our freedom is, I think, very important, and I'm glad that our military and veterans also are remembering, especially our police and our fire, especially that relation. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Romero, and I live on here on Point. When I was in your office, Mr. Verkes, I was unable to find the article on the disputing the location of the memorial. And it was on our general meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2022. And it reads, "As a result of our roundtable discussion, the following motion was made. Herb moved, and Carol second, we rescind our decision to donate fifteen hundred dollars towards a plaque that honors Digger Odell's story until we have more information about its planned location. Motion carried by a vote of ten to two. At that time, we were disputing the location. That is still our dispute, the location of the memorial. I know that having the memorial, and the Colonel Odell's memorial, at the site of our memorial garden is important to you, Mr. Verkes, but I hope you realize that he is not the only important person. Every veteran on that wall is important to somebody in Harrison Township. What do you think about our Gold Star families? They, they've lost members, husbands, fathers, mothers, brothers and sisters. Those families are still suffering after the loss of their children. How do you think they'll feel about a forty thousand dollar monument going up for one person, when they have just their names, and everybody else on our monument does? There was one veteran that, at the Army Veterans Vietnam Chapter, that said that he believes that the importance of this monument isn't so much important for Lieutenant or Colonel Odell, but more for the Board. Sound like what you've done, not to honor him, but to honor what you guys are doing. And I don't think that is going to work out well, if that is the intention, because so many people do not look well on this idea of having that memorial at our veterans' garden. So I think it would look more, it would be look more advisable for you to have it elsewhere. I think more people would look better on that. We are asking for our veterans, Gold Star families, and many of our residents of Harrison Township, that you please decide to relocate the memorial for Colonel Odell. Our veterans have fought, and some have died for us. Now, we are willing to fight for their honor in keeping that memorial. Thank you."
Members of the Board, citizens from Harrison Township, Ramona, thank you for inviting me. I'm a resident of Harrison Township for 42 years. I'm no longer a resident here, but I still have my church here, St. The Hubert Church. Still a member, 42 years, and 42 years Harrison Township, Harrison Township. But the main thing is that, considering all aspects of what may be the criticism, or what the positives or negatives can be about Digger Odell, gentlemen, respectful, and what he deserves, we all agree. The fact is, all veterans... The fact is, all veterans are equal. We all take the pledge, protect our country, and to protect our citizens, and to protect our brothers in battle, wherever it may be. We are all equal, and we're not putting any one of us ahead. Army, military, I'm Air Force, and he is? Marines, all right. But the thing is, I I I'm here as an Air Force member for four years, nineteen fifty-four to fifty-eight. Three more days will be sixty-nine years since I served in the military. It wasn't just serving in the military, just to be in the military. I mean, it was doing the Korean conflict and the Cold War, nineteen fifty-seven, when I was in England, controlling the B forty-sevens with the Royal Air Force in Bresnorten, England. The main thing that I wanna put across, as I will back Mona, what she said, all veterans are equal. We would protect each other, whether you're a general or just a regular enlistee. We are all equal, and I think we, Digger Odell deserves whatever he has, not taking anything away from him, but we are all veterans and we stick together. We will protect each other, and we stand by what we did, served our country, and will continue serving our citizens. May I say thank you?
Thank you, thank you for your service.
My name is Tommy Phelps, I live on Shoreline. I was a member of Marine Corps between nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-five, and I think the Veterans Memorial is to honor all veterans, not to honor one above the rest. And, uh, I do believe that, um, Digger, Digger Odell did, did, did a, did a good job and did a service to the country and everything like that. And and I think the the memorial is to honor all veterans equally, not just one.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Supervisor, members of the board, citizens. I'm Herb Lawrence, I live at three nine seven four oh Cove Street, Harrison Township. I've lived here just slightly more than fifty years. A number of years ago, when I retired from teaching middle school, I happened to join a gym. And wouldn't you know, one of the members of the gym that I joined was Digger Odell. And very interesting, we would have many, many, many conversations. But one of the things that I was impressed at, and having never been in the military myself, I was impressed at the fact that this man was focused on veterans. I remember one time asking him, and I said, Digger, Digger, how come you got shot down? In fun, he turned around and he looked at me and he said, because I zigged when I should have zagged. And you know what? After that, we became friends. Digger, from that point, came into my classroom a number of times. And I'll tell you, with the middle school teachers that I, with the middle school students that I had, he had those students sitting on the floor in the way that he was in a prison camp for five years, with, out in the sun, and with no water and no food and things like this. And you know what? Those kids, even today, remember those days, and they remember his speech. I do also remember the time, as a member of the beautification committee that I am, that he spoke at the Veterans Memorial here. And he went on, and he could have spoken for an hour or more, and he did speak for an hour. And we were ready to get the hook, as it were, but you know something? Nobody moved, because he was the veteran. And you know what? V E T E R A N, that is the important word, not Digger Odell, but veteran first. Amen.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Uh, board members, residents, C. William Bardell, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door, twenty-six-year resident, clean-up, fix-up, people helping people. Wanted to remind everyone, uh, uh, check out, uh, Save Lake Sinclair, follow, uh, keep up to date on everything that's going on, and, uh, everyone stay safe, uh, layer it up, got crazy weather, ninety degrees one day, forty degrees the next day, and, uh, layer it up, dress warm, keep your feet dry, drink plenty of water, get a lot of sleep, thank you so much, enjoy your night.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the floor for public comment, any board comment? Excuse me, God bless you. Hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Tom Nello, support by Mrs. Rose, any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you, board.
Adam, are there any other documents with that lawsuit, other than what you put in that board packet?
Hi, Barbara.